And would you please stand to the plate? Ready again?
Congratulations to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invincible, with the vision of justice for all.
There is not a report out of closed session this evening. I have a motion to the governor's assembly. Some minutes, I think. Colonel, are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
One addition, or change, I should say, on item 13C. Mike Morrison for Tennessee International Society for Technology Education. We traditionally have been paying for airfare for some of our out-of-state. I feel it would be a great for us to provide this airfare up to $400 for this one simply because of the, what we've been doing. So that would change the amount for that total to $3,512.10 and a total amount change of $22,870.77 for this one.
Thank you. What was the favor of the agenda as a member?
I like.
Here's my vote. We have a lot of recommendations tonight. We'll start with those. Probably comment on the agenda. First, do you have athletic recommendations?
All right. Good evening. Thank you, Board, Cabinet, welcome. And as we wrap up the end of the year, we're super excited to highlight only some of our accomplishments for the 2018, I'm sorry, 1718 square. And I'd like to start with our members from girls surf. Come on up. I'd like to recognize our coaches, Mr. Finn, Miss Karen, and want to recognize our girls surf team, Chloe Tambara, Jade Hallson, Tess Booth, Claire Kelly, Kayla Casino, Caroline Kimble, Kelly Smith, and Maya Takabayashi. Welcome, oh, three of which are yours. Oh, we're good.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Chloe. That's half of our state championship team right there. And boys tennis, we have a CIF championship first time since 1982. Thirty-five years ago, so many of us weren't even born yet. A lot of different stories out there. But I'd like to recognize the members of the boys varsity tennis teams and their CIF championship, starting with freshmen first. And our sole freshman representative is Matt Burke.
It's Matt Burke.
Standing next to me, I know it can be scary. Sophomores Mohammed Barry, Andrew Wong, Matt Wong, Warren Ingersoll, Andrew Johnson, and Casey Bone. And Dana Whitel. Congratulations. Juniors Mason Levy, Francis Pillsbury, Sam Reynolds, Taylor Tran, and Scott Yoder. And finally, our seniors Lake Hawkins and Nick Vesso. The coaches, please.
Yours, please.
Well, how do you provide certificates of your students? But opportunity.
If the moms want to come this way, come on up. If you're in the center, you can come.
It's a paparazzi, everyone.
And next we have, very high-class, we have fifth grades, building students, the winner and the runner-up.
So, meeting President, Board Members, friends, relatives, we have our winner of the, well, the way the spelling bee works, we have each school cycle its own spelling bee to identify 12 participants. And then from there, we have a competition with both elementary schools. And Lyra Caden was the last student standing after a long... First place finisher, and congrats to Max Reamer as well, also from TOW, who was our center's place. He's unable to be here this evening.
Do you remember what your winning word was?
What was that?
It's so terrible.
Can you show them?
You can have a board room.
We'll do one photo. We do one picture.
My other notes.
Congratulations so much.
Next, we have a first recognition of our reclassified members. Ready?
Hi, good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being present. Thank you, Board Members, staff, parents, some midnight. Tonight, it's my pleasure to be here to recognize our students that have been reclassified. As you know, our district holds over 22 languages, and we're happy to celebrate their accomplishments tonight. So from the high school, Elliot Trinidad. Jofrey Grias. There's two students that are now present that I would like to call their name, Anthony Justos and Matthew Gallegos could not be here tonight. From top of the world, Kate Kaijay Rose. Ivan Salgado. From El Moro, Ashley Spencer. David Sanchez. Rachel Lambert. From Thurston, Kate Sterigova. Kevon could not be here today, but I'd like to say his name, Kevon Garcia Mina. Kiara Flores. Kenneth Lopez. Pearl, who also not be here tonight, Pearl Garcilaso. And last but not least, Summer Sanchez Cornet.
I got a good picture.
Thank you.
Next, we recognize our Ju-Toe mentors.
Hi, everyone. Thank you again for being here. I want to take a moment to recognize our Ju-Toe academic student mentors. I would just like to take a moment to thank them, our Laguna Beach Senior High School students that will be graduating shortly. They, thank them for their continued dedication and investment into supporting students across all of our elementary sites. Francisco Godoy with 76 hours. Kayla Gonzalez with 49 hours. Perla Madrigal with 47 hours. And I had two students that could not be here today, but I would still like to mention them. Jose Ramirez with 25 hours and Navid Chalchi with 20.5 hours. Oh, and I'm sorry, I wanted to recognize one more person. I apologize. Madeline Melkor with 40.5 hours.
Cheers. We have a number of Destination Imagination teams. Are they outside?
Three, how can we?
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for coming to celebrate our Destination Imagination teams. So from TOW, if I could have the neighbors please come forward. And I'm getting one team compete in the tournament. We started the year with three teams. We had one team make it through the whole process of just getting ready for the tournament. So these brave souls competed, and they came in second place in the improvisational challenge, qualifying for states, but they could not attend states due to other conflicts. So we have Emma Berg, big hand, Emma. Piper Clausen, thumbs up there kiddo. Colin Gregg, looking sharp, liking the jacket. And then Jack Hurst, who won it on the beer today. Special shout out to Phyllis Fang, because so much of the work behind Destination Imagination. The team managers, so much of the work happens outside this whole day. And for us, a special also shout out to Mrs. Mary Thomas, who's got here tonight. She helped manage the instant challenge piece on campus. But again, congratulations, Victoria. I hope to see you guys compete next year as well.
Hello, I'm here to represent Thurston's Destination Imagination. We had a very successful year with five teams. We grow every year, and our teams went on to the state level and two teams went on to global finals in Tennessee. These teams worked extremely hard for many months to creatively solve open-ended challenges in science, technology, improvisation, and... And those were what our teams competed in. The first team we'd like to recognize are the Thunder Muckings. Their team manager. And here's going to remain standing, I think you want all the teams together?
We got individual shots of all the group teams together, but we need to get a bigger group.
Okay, so stay here. And the team manager is Phyllis Fang. The team consists of Michael Berg, Will Coffey, Theo Coffey, Odin Flores, and George Saba. Our next team, and this team went to global finals. Our next team is Esprit DI Core. And this team went all the way through state, the state tournament, in the scientific challenge. And the team manager is Frank Ariano. This team consists of Kai Ariano, Jeff Perkins, Coco Reed, Sherwin Riaki, and Elliot Shakers. Jeff Perkins is representing. The next team, Cabinet. Cabinet competed in the improvisational challenge and went all the way to global finals in Tennessee. The team managers are John and Tanya Hovanesian. And the team consists of Quinn Butler, May Chapman, Aphelia Chapman, and Ani Hovanesian.
So the next team we'd like to honor is the Fantastic Four, all the way to the state tournament. They took the technical challenge. Team manager is Sarah Durant. The team consists of Jacob Cruz, Lucas Durant, Kiara Hunthausen, Hannah Kaiser, and Sebastian Otterbolz. And our next and final team for Thurston, Destination Infiltration. Challenge, they went to state tournament, qualified for locals, but did not...
No, we didn't qualify.
Team manager is Lisa Perkins, James DeJerry, Chris Perkins, Dylan Newberry, and Tyler Paulino. So all the Thurston kids who just want to come back up, we'll keep you guys all in picture and come back.
So our DI teams would like to thank Mr. Avila and Mrs. Wu so much for all of your support. Without you, we could not have made it through instant challenges, which is a big part of all of the tournaments. So this is for you. And you will find something very dear to those DI teams who are just in the middle of the process.
Congratulations, you guys. Thanks for all your hard work. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of making, so we appreciate that. Look forward to you guys continuing to work and push yourself. Recognize the Laguna Beach High School Destination Imagination team, the brilliant Boom Bang Bananas. All right, well, last but certainly not least, we have our recognitions for our student board members for 2017, 2018. Well, you have one of these really heavy things.
I do, I'm excited. I do some blow in my books.
There you go. Now you have a book in on the other side. So we'll start with Chloe Bryan. We'll be a little more about it. We'll get them all, and I know you should wear your stuff. I'd like to extend our thanks to Piper.
One, two.
That's so nice. Thank you.
So I know the Board will have some words to share, but I just want to thank you both. I know how much time it takes to be here, and we're just appreciative to have your voice on the Board, to be here and to share what's going on, especially at our high school system, and what all the events that you guys take in. It's a busy place, as you know, and you're all, you're both very, very involved. So thanks for taking part in our Board meetings and look forward to continuing to see both of your faces. I know Chloe, you're going to continue, you're a junior.
I'm a junior both degrees.
But Piper's, yeah, so, but I'll see both your faces around. You're going to be on a show.
You'll see me, I'm an ASB and everywhere, so you'll still see me.
You'll always see her. So again, appreciate your service and pass it off to the board members who'd like to share.
Well, I want to thank them both, because I see them on campus all the time because I have high schoolers. So I'm impressed that you speak up. You're not shy about having good, strong opinions, which is really important, so keep that up throughout your life. But service is a great thing, and I think it teaches you over time that you can do these things at college and on work. So I'm proud of both of you when I see you around campus. Like, they're my board reps, they're my girls. So well done, ladies. Thank you for your services.
Thank you for your services.
Well, as well, and as you share, decide to share all things. You both have such different personalities, so you bring that when you come. I really appreciate it.
Agree. You help remind us of the reason that we're here. So I love seeing your faces and being reminded how much we care about the students here. And each, each thing that you brought just made us...
And also, thank you. And I think that it's really important that we have volunteers who do public service. That's what we do. And so I'm hoping this is to start both of you in being interested in civic activity and encouraging your friends to get involved in bureaucracies that run organizations, institutions are complicated. And I know this, these are business meetings, so they're not really. But it's important to understand what makes... And I know this, these are business meetings, so they're not really, but it's important to understand what makes a district relevant. As he says, the vital part is just all about the students, and so it's always important that we have a student voice. So thanks for coming in, picking us up.
Now do we get to rest them?
Yeah.
There's probably a magnet here.
Sorry.
I just want to say thank you, um, this is my second year on the board. And I've been involved with this kind of stuff, like, pretty much my whole life, because I've always, like, been able to just voice my opinions. And this was like a platform that was much more professional, which is a good outlet for me. And I'm very excited to use the talents that I've gained here in the future. I want to be a lawyer, criminal defense litigator, actually, so it's a little bit specific. But I think that being able to be around adults and be confident enough to tell you and talk to you, to your face about what I'm thinking about things is very beneficial. And so I want to thank you for that. And I want to tell, but you'll probably see me, because I'm in the shows all the time, so.
Thank you all for such a great experience, I really. We have public comments for non-again items, and I have card readers from David Flores.
Can I speak from there? Alright.
Our camera doesn't get over there very.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good, then. Hello, it's been a long time since I've been here, but thank you very much for taking a minute to listen to me. First of all, thank you for supporting the D I team, my son was on that team, I really appreciated that. I also am here because my son is practicing for lacrosse, so I have to wait for him to finish his practice. I thought I'd take the opportunity. My comment is very brief, I know that the board has been working on the calendar. And I had asked my son, what his thoughts were, I know that the boys were surveyed, the girls were surveyed, staff was surveyed. And I found it really interesting, and again, I think you will make the decision that you feel is best for the kids, which I hope you do. But the majority, vast majority of his colleagues, his students, friends, and students from Thurston that he knows, supported the change. And their view was that it would be good for them. Some of them were, would be disappointed in not being able to enjoy the beach for a few more weeks. But they thought all in all, the academics were really important, and they would have more time to prepare for, for some of the AP courses. So that's just my input, thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you. So any other public comments on non-again items? We move to our reports, and are you sharing tonight?
Yes, okay, so first, at this conclusion of my report, me, Piper, and I, so it's past week, we took, our juniors did cast testing. And I think the seniors also took the cast testing, which is just science, and that was really fun. But that's over, and I think almost everyone's taken it, because Ms. Norris is really on top of everyone for doing makeups and taking kids out of class for them. Seniors taking finals this week, and last week was Powder Pup, and the juniors won.
Wow.
Piper and I were both on the team.
Wow.
Starters.
Starters. Um, so then also, a couple of weeks ago, Anne Frank was put on, and that was, I was in it, I played Edith Frank, and she's on. And it was a really powerful experience, a lot of us had a really difficult time, but seemed to kind of act in it. And I think it was really cool, because we got to visit the J C C and meet Holocaust survivors, which was really cool. So I think that was really cool, because also the middle schoolers are reading the play at the same time, and they went and came and saw us, so they have a little context. Thurston Seussical was also a success, I did not see it, but you saw it. And I heard it was really cute, and then Quad Chella, so this is, so everyone knows what Quad Chella is, right? So A S B is organizing Quad Chella, me and Cal are running it, and so we're having student performers in the quad at lunch. So I started off week one with Markon, and we performed. And then the second week was the band Gerth Puppy, which is Erickson, Garcia, Cole Hunt, and Grant some.
What's the name of the band?
Gerth Puppy. Okay.
Gerth Puppy.
Just wanted to make sure. And they're really funny, and they did a really great job. And then this week is senior performers, because this is the last week, so we decided that only seniors would perform. And so I think we have Casey Conley, Markon again, Ian Mike Fortner, and Nelson Wilson. So a bunch of my drama friends, and they're performing at lunch, so you guys can stop by. Um, we have, the quad is gonna be covered in towels and chairs, and then I think we're also gonna have a flower head band making booth, it's gonna be fun. So yeah, that's Quad Chella. This week is also Candle Rose, I believe, and we have a few performers doing that. Um, seniors are graduating, did you know that? This Thursday, and I'm working to the booth, so yeah, we're excited to see that. Next week is all senior activities, I don't know the actual schedule, but I'm pretty sure it's somewhere. And then the A C R Symposium is tonight, I believe, so if you go over there, that'll be there. Also, this week is mental illness showcase by the playwriting and directing students. Um, so it's either two combined or playwriting and directing. I was in this class last year, and it was really cool, because we got to be able to direct and write our own scenes and cast them as well, so that was really cool. And that's at three thirty in the green room tomorrow, their first show is on Monday. Um, but if you want more details, that'll be on Miss Carol's Hike page. So yeah, thank you, not many sports stuff, because all the sports are over, so yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you.
Chloe. Chloe, you did a great job, and Frank.
Oh, you saw it?
Yeah, you couldn't, I mean, everybody knows how it ends, but you, but it was so emotional, we were totally, we were slapping. And that was due to the emotion you guys.
It was definitely the most difficult character I've ever had to play, because not only was I someone in a very difficult time, which I've never had to do, I was also a mom. So I obviously don't know how that is, because I'm not a mom, and I don't think I will be for a long time. But it was, it was, it was very difficult, so I had to use a lot of me, being an older sister, and like applying it to my younger brother and stuff like that, to figure out kind of how to do that. But yeah, so thank you for coming, it was.
I know that it's not every day you get your name on a paper, so you can take that for free.
Thank you, and I looked at all my winches, I was like, Piper, I'm proud of you.
You want to get Piper her flowers?
We're gonna hold on to Piper's.
Oh, we can hold on to Piper's.
Yeah.
I should have a report from the booth.
So it's been a busy few weeks, we broadied our tentative agreement with one hundred percent positive votes, so that was great. And the I B B process, I felt like, has impacted our whole district, because we have representatives from C S C A and L U F O at all levels. I've been using it in my P L Cs and in our planning meetings, trying to move forward with our special ed department, and using some of those same things about interests. What are your interests, is that an action item, and tell your story? So that's been a positive thing that I felt like, there was a little bit of pushback, it's so much time on our classrooms, and is this really worth all that we're going through? But I hope that the trickle effect will go beyond negotiations, and I feel like it's been really positive training for all of us. Rocket Ready was also a great district connection, I felt, between C S C A and also L U F O, and that was a very positive experience. For me personally, I felt like I learned a lot, and there's always that moment where you think, I'm just not gonna actually do this, and this isn't really what I do. And then you dig in, and I now am an authority on WeVideo editing and technology, I told Mike I could leave that class now, after having moved through that. But I think that, again, it's a great opportunity, and everyone's busy scheduled together, together, and see what people are doing in their classrooms. It's fun for me to see what other teachers were doing, and to have all of us student involvement, so I think it's a great, anyway, tool for doing that. I determined lots, a few months ago, that I would not put my name in for the L U F O elections, again, just due to special ed takes. It gets deeper and wider, it seems like, every year, and right now, I felt like that's where my focus should be. So we had an election, it said one person for each office that was on our ballot. It's very easy, but Sarah Hopper will be the new president of L U F O, and Mary Ann Bynum, who's been our secretary for a long time, will be vice president. And that quickly will continue as our treasurer, which is great, because that's the complicated part of money. And then Rosie Haynes, in elementary school, will be stepping in as the secretary, so that would be great. Our calendar, we really appreciate the careful consideration of everyone. I feel like, I know there's been some concerns with whether we support what we're doing, and I think as members, a lot of teachers have different opinions, personal feelings about it. But I think we're really united in the fact that we will support whatever the school board decides, and we recognize that it's been done with careful consideration and gathering information. And that makes it easy to get our members to all stand behind it, and recognize that that's the direction, whatever it is that's decided in that. And we're encouraging our teachers to email you or show up next week to share whatever it is that they would like to share with you. On that note, I was sharing that when people come to share their feelings and emotions with me, often I'll say, well, you can share anything you want with the school board. Because they'll say, have you told them, so I said, you can send an email anytime, and I was walking across campus, and one of the teachers grabbed me last week and said, remember how you told me I can email the school board anytime I want? Well, the message I want you to give them is, I love my job, I'm so happy here, I think that we really are well-paid for what we do, and I love my students, and I have all the materials I need in my classroom when I went. Okay, I will pass that along.
She can email us too, or.
I know, I know that she did, but maybe Tuesday or Thursday. Oh, yes, you know, that's a good thing, we'll have them share that out. I want to thank Victoria for, it's been great working with you for these last three years, you do a great job organizing the wind beneath the wings, making sure everything moves forward. I have loved working with the school board, and I love, it's not really like saying goodbye at all, because I will see you just as much, just not on Tuesday nights. It's great that you guys are all on campus. I, yeah, and our administrative board, I feel like we've become friends and colleagues, and I've been working with you, and I appreciate that. And since you're all on campus all the time, nothing will really change, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to also just say that we did our voting last Wednesday, and C S C A, as you know, does things just a little bit differently. Have to say that, so I had two visitors with me, and that's Tiara Cox, who's the editor of the Orange Bill Office, and Robert DeWes, who is our labor rep. But what I'd really like to say about that, from the start here at the district office, to Almora, to Thurston, to Top of the World, back to the district office, over to the high school, then back to the high school. The principals, the staff, the teachers, the faculty, the students, everybody was so open, that they were very impressed with us, is how we are. And I'm not gonna say it's a little good away, but that visitors are accepted. One of the teachers at the high school, there was students come in, let me show you all about this, let's go in this room, let me, just so embracing. And all we were doing is really just walking the campus, so they could see it and see how we functioned. But at each site, that was the welcoming. The principals that were there would stop and say hello, we ran into Dr. Valario a couple of times, they were just so impressed. Their comments about our campuses, about how clean they are, how, you know, the students, just a different place and a different way of them seeing how business is done, to deliver education to students. So with that, I want to thank everyone for that, because it really makes me feel like, everything that I say when I go to those meetings about the collaboration and the respect that happens, they saw it firsthand. And that's the part, it's the most important. Our vote was a hundred and seven, I'm going to say, yeses, therefore truly ratifying the contract. And with that, I'd also like to say that we are having our party tomorrow at three thirty over behind the high school office. And everyone is welcome to come by, please. And one more thing I should say for Ms. White and Dr. O'Devo, is that when Dr. O'Devo started two years ago, she said, and so did Dr. Valero, where are the I As, why are the red seats empty? The embracement of our special ed and classroom instructional assistance in professional trainings is just with our professional development meeting with Ms. White there, talking about the programs that are gonna happen those first five days before school starts. And it filters into other departments too, but I just really want to highlight that, is all I can say is thank you, they thank you, and they feel like they're a part of the whole process. And that brings us all together as this family, for us, thank you.
Tiffany, represented organizations, we work from V T A or School Power? We have board members.
Uh, the only thing I attended was the School Power ended their dinner as their board rep, and so they kind of transitioned, they welcomed Sarah Durant, said goodbye to Robert. It was really nice, you were introduced to the new trustees.
Do you have a lot of trustees?
They do, they have six couples. So definitely, and getting younger kids and lots of kids, so it's great.
I attended the community coalition, and I did a little bit of it as an update, and I just, and I know we, I think everyone's experienced Cyber Cop, and. So he was there for his presentation, and other things outside of that that came up were the coalitions sometimes that were made that, they, where they hope they could teach parents, it's for parents to teach their kids that their body is the temple, is their temple, don't play anything, if you don't know what it is. It's really a way of understanding vaping, you don't really know all the chemicals that happens, so yeah, just don't play your mouth, hope it'll help, and that's for, and other things that they covered was September twenty fifth, which in its little way, we should, but it's. They, in all this research, they found that one way to keep your kids from using drugs and alcohol, smoking, is dinners. And so September twenty fifth is nationals, have dinner with your family, and hope that you're getting much more than annual, but I thought they start rolling out that. I know, of course, the Boys and Girls Club is really rolling this out, and they're talking about it now, because they go, or breakfast, whatever, just have a meal with your family, or just a meal. And the more meals you have, the more it gives opportunity for these things to come up, and our parents are being very, very intentional about their meals. I'm just thinking guys are so intentional about reading, and the information that's in there, they will open up and share, give that information. And the person sharing it was very helpful, because I was like, yeah, I thought it went up, right? But it made me realize that there is a gap there, and that's why we're being very intentional about, also we're a special one. And then trying to encourage us on a more regular basis. And then, and then there was this interesting, which I'll share, because it wasn't an update, was what, what the speaker did speak about was the fact that tobacco, we discovered, had lied to us, and kind of ruined people's lives and their money, right, robbed them of them. And vaping is taking that same playbook, same exact one, and for you to apply it to vaping, and making it cool and safe, and that we could do it, and it's not, it's not safer, they're showing doctors and ads and stuff, as though a doctor would be saying it, which doctors aren't now. We're about that, right, but we're kind of getting the same advertisement, trying to resell it, and when they went through, they took a hundred different vaping aerosol companies that sell, and they broke down what the product was, because everybody says it's water, but it's actually aerosol, and it leaves this film that penetrates your lungs. And so even the main thing of this is water, it's not harmful, isn't true? And then the four dozen chemicals, they went through a hundred of the main ones they find, but all these chemicals, all these chemicals, metal. It was shocking, and the amount of chemicals besides nicotine, or whatever's wrong with it, because it's in there, that is left over either when it starts, when it burns, during digestion. And I thought, I think it scares parents greatly, and kids to have the information that, that will help their digestive, because I don't think it's clear, I think kids will say that it's not dangerous, like less dangerous, right? And so I think they'd be shocked if they saw it, and so that, and those results just came out last week, so they'll start posting and sharing, hopefully, you know, hundreds of products or something like that. And that they were appreciative of Stanford, the tobacco, the tobacco program, is it Stanford?
Stanford.
Yeah, so they're very appreciative that we're, because it's something that a lot of people on that college know about, and so they're very excited that we're gonna be teaching from it, because they think this kind of information gets fed right into that, or research, and it'll come to our kids. So the great names, let's give them a question.
Um, I am the JMC. That was back on May 23rd. So it was like we had a fair lot for being checked as usual, which is why they don't want to carry the information. Um, most has come out in our updates since, so, um, but it is, once again, a wonderful venue to share information. Every year is the same thing. The slides are very clear and concise. It's much appreciated.
I only attended the endowment meeting, which is always interesting. Um, they went over the balance sheets and did some adjusting for trends, trying to ensure that the funds are not too volatile, but make steady growth. And one of the gentlemen is leading the financial committee, so there will be someone else. And, um, was about it.
I said it on that meeting also, and Dr. Valero was there as well, so they, uh, went, Gideon, Dr. Valero, provided information about the district to update the month, the, 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 the budget and that calendar discussion. And then I attended the, uh, the last BTA council meeting, which is all understand now, downtown, we talked about it, which was really nice. Mostly the vaping is there as well, mostly social media, but they had a little short meeting first. And they introduced the people that are changing positions. It's been pretty low-key on the, in those kind of meetings.
Winding down. First, uh, I won't spend too much time, because we have a lot of things to talk about tonight. But I just want to say, uh, the convocation was, uh, an amazing event. Uh, Kudos to Keta. As, as always, the brownies and the cookies were fantastic.
Good to see you, it's not me. They were.
And, uh, just general, uh, positive, great stories for the year. There's a lot of passion in the room for what people bring, uh, scholarships.
By the groups and they all responded. So I think it's important that we look at these as big indicators. First, eighty-four percent, uh, my child's school or my school provides a positive learning environment. That's eighty-four percent. That's on par with the previous, um, with the previous year's data. Uh, the second one is my school or my, my school, my child's school is a safe place for learning. Again, on par. Uh, ninety-three percent feel that we are adequately, uh, providing or adequately resourcing our school things. The last one is something I want to draw attention to. Last year, this was, this indicator was at eighty percent. So this is a decline for us. When you look deeply into the data, you'll see that we, uh, we have five indicators. So strongly agree, strongly disagree. We had that percentage dropout of strongly disagree to, uh, excuse me, strongly agree to dis- strong, to agree. And so that eight, that nine percent moved to the neutral indicator. So we've got work to do, but it didn't go to strongly disagree. So I think it's important when we look at data. But this is an area of focus for us and we've already, we can actually address it. The LCAP process, as you know, is, um, a three-year plan. So I think it's important that we take a, take a look at this. We've talked to our, uh, LCAP advisory group about this, but this is our decision-making process. First, we look at our needs, right? We are data informed. Data drive our decision-making, but we want to be informed beyond just the numbers. What does that really mean for us? We prioritize our goals. We identify our actions and services and we ask who's going to be serving, who will be served. Before we identify what's on top, we identify our core expenditures, our core program. And then we identify our supplementals. We measure that change, right? That's our program evaluation. In the LCAP, you only make a change for your three-year plan if you're significantly not meeting the goals as stated. We are meeting the goals as stated. So there have a little star up here, you have your handout, but it shows you that revisions must follow careful evaluation. We did not revise our goals because we met those expectations. So let's move to our successes. So first, here are, uh, our CAS, our ELA claims. So reading, writing, listening, research over three years. We have some really exciting, our English learners increased to seven percent and our students with disabilities increased too. Again, in math things. So again, students, I should have said this on the previous slide, but CAS is Thursday eighth and eleventh grade. It's one indicator, but we're doing, we're doing well. You can see that seventy-two percent of our students met or exceeded in math. And that's an increase two percent for all students and increase, increased four percent for our English learners. Another area that we're doing well is college and career readiness. So here's, uh, our AP tests. We have kind of two different snapshots that at first is the number of tests taken and students tested. But this, uh, number is not a hundred percent representative since we also have an increase of students at the high school, right? So we want to make sure that we're also looking at percentage and you can see an increase in percentage there. Something that's not listed here, um, but also a college and career readiness indicator is that our, um, UC CSU eligibility climbed. It was at seventy-two percent and increased to seventy-six percent. We're excited about that. And, uh, we have three full CTE pathways for that coming year. Nineteen AP classic courses, including a new AP computer science. Of course, so we're excited about those. With regard to our, uh, greatest needs, you know this, we've presented this information to you. So you've seen this data. Oops, sorry. So, um, we do have some, some improvement. Uh, that information is going to ask you in the weekly, but, uh, our elementary and Thurston are in single digits, eight percent. And, um, the high school is, remains at fourteen percent. But they're hard at work on strategies to make sure the students are in seats and accounted for. Okay. And another important part of this is the, the dashboard data view. This is literally screenshot, I took it from the dashboard indicators. We are one of the few districts that are green and, uh, blue on the, on the outside. But when you go into the student groups, we're not. So, uh, that's, we have areas to continue to work in. We are primarily greens and blues though. Our indicator for, uh, that we need to continue to work on are, um, in the area of suspension. But again, it's, uh, in our only yellow category is, uh, students that are two or more races. Our, is an area that we just need to continue to work in. So I want to, I know you've seen our goals. I just want to call out, uh, some of the changes in each of our goal areas. So the goal again has not changed, but the areas in which we've addressed it this year. We've identified and hired a digital librarian with your support. Uh, uh, we've, I, we have intervention programs in, uh, pilots going, um, at sites. And we have ELD interventions after school at both Thurston and Amor. Great, and the second goal is students will gain the knowledge through college and career writing. We're very proud of our new CTE computer science pathway and will offer AP computer science A. Our third goal, as you know, is professional development focused on twenty-first century learning. So we have, we've held courses this year led by our teachers in professional development, uh, open to all staff after school. And, uh, it's, uh, teacher-led, we, we believe in building capacity whenever possible. In addition, we have a second year rocket ready. As you know, some of you are in attendance and, uh, launch pad is also available to many staff members. Our fourth goal, as you know, safe, attractive, clean, well-equipped learning environments. We believe our successes this year are our four ELD classes. We set a goal of, uh, ten. We accomplished, um, fourteen classrooms this year. So we're excited about that. Two of those are those old classes. Uh, we have, um, this is, um, Mr. Morrison's contribution. We are in fact more, we have more devices than students in our one-to-one. Um, and we did, uh, uh, thanks to ADDG, our adult education fund, we refurbished room ninety-one. Our fifth goal. All stakeholders will be engaged in the learning process by promoting variety of opportunities. This is an area we have flourished. Remember that slide by the numbers? I want to just call out a few things for us this year. We expanded our LCAP advisory committee from one to three. We helped three focus groups. And we offer articulated course and concurrent enrollment. Uh, we've had several increases. That's your second handout in front of you. If I could draw your attention. It looks like this. So you'll see not only, uh, the increases of our students of concurrent enrollment, uh, you'll see the, the courses that are listed. We're excited about continuing to offer student, uh, opportunities for our students in this area. So you've seen this slide, but it is our timeline. It, it is, we are seeking input throughout the year, continuing to make sure as we, as data comes in, we are looking at it with a critical eye. Alluding to the need as every single student, every day. With that, are there any questions?
Would it be possible at some point maybe to get the members of students that might be involved in the different classes?
I asked for that, I need to seek the answer. Uh, that was the data that was provided to Anne Merton. With regard to that, um, I can follow up for you, absolutely.
Like is tempting them to do, to, uh, do the dual.
There's some interesting courses on that list, aren't there? Yes.
Right.
I always think that kind of work, really interesting. I mean, I actually go to the beach today, which tells you I had to wait a while for my friends to show up. But it, uh, you know, you actually read, you wouldn't do go into it. It is interesting and it does provide a picture and some of the data is less than stellar, but that's good too, you know? To be able to see where we do need to work. And I do think that, because this data is last year's, correct? So I, I would be really interested to see with all Gotti's work and the focusing and Michael being here, what.
It's a good point.
Sadly, I won't be here for it, but I'll look for it on the, on the website.
That's great. So remember around there is one caveat to that. Uh, in the LCAP, we have to lift the narrative section out of the stakeholder engagement piece. That data is this year's data.
Okay. Well, I, that should be, I was going to say.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
Charge, charge, I'm charging.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, um, I really enjoyed seeing how, where we're spending our money to where, where our goals are and how we're aligning that. And LCAP as a tool to help us align that. And, um, I remember when we started, it was really, but I think we're, I think we're over our budget. I think we're more intentional to the values and rules and policies and aligning our budget. And I know that's worth, more worth for you to do that and work together and get all that. And I know part of it is required, but I love the story and connecting all and taking money and goals for kids.
It's alright, it's for kids.
For the kids.
You kind of makes that comment about some of the not being that stellar. I think that speaks to what you said about being a learning organization. Then keep trying to either write or try again and things change and, and student populations change as far as what makes up that population. But also I think it's better to have an authentic document than, uh, that shows that we are, you know, have things to work on than the other way. Because that's, and if that's, if that's what's happening by putting something like LCAP in place, that's better. It's better for students rather than previous systems where everybody just said, oh yeah, this is great. So it is, again, it is a lot of work. The, the document, that's a lot of work, but thank you.
Close probably. And now we'll open the public hearing on the Innovation Fund School District's preliminary twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen all funds budget.
Thank you, President Vickers, members of the board. I'm pleased to share with you our recommendation for our information item related to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year budget. Um, I'm going to run through the assumptions in the budget document. And as I'm going through some of these slides, I will call out the page number in the budget document itself so you can pull up the details. Because this is going to be a higher role of the, the, uh, book itself. So this year we experienced, uh, about a six point six percent increase in year-over-year property tax growth, um, versus last. And for next year, we're projecting a five percent growth for eighteen nineteen. That amounts to roughly a two million dollar increase in our revenues. Um, you can find the detail on the projection on page sixteen with the new budget rule. And then you can also see with the pie chart the relationship of how much is tied to LCFF slash local property taxes, the federal amount of funds that we receive, other state, other region. Another assumption that was built into the proposed budget before you is related to the one-time discretionary funds, um, from the state. Currently, there is not a budget deal done, there is a compromise, but the major revision had roughly two billion dollars done. Their compromised budget, which we'll go through on next week, uh, has half of that, one billion dollars. In our budget, the document here, we assume thirty-three percent of that. So it's a conservative, but it's enough that we, you can see by the, uh, charts below. What that is showing is that if we receive none of the one-time money, um, the ratio between the revenues and expenditures is, is the same as if we received some. And if all of that two billion dollars which was initially in the major revision was received, would actually, um, increase the total amount of revenues beyond what the expenditures will increase based on the, uh, the tentative agreements. The expenditures, uh, this is on, the detail is on, begins on page twenty-four in the budget book. Salaries and benefits reflect a two percent on billing increase, or not benefits, I'm sorry, just the salaries, two percent on schedule. Cherry over is removed, one-time money is, um, built in for the half a percent off schedule. And the transfers out of general fund are the, are status closed this year. You have the transfer out for food service, the CIP and the facility repair replacement program, the same amounts they were for seventeen.
You need to move your slide, there you go. Well, it's okay.
And then you, again, through the pie chart, you can see that the majority of the expenditures are tied to salaries and benefits. We are a people organization, so it makes sense that they'd be there, followed by our operating expenses and then material supplies and contract expenses. So as far as the adjustments go from this year to two thousand eighteen, nineteen, uh, you can see that the bulk of the increases driven by salaries and benefits. And a lot of that, um, to do with benefits is related back to the start of the first increases that we're going to see year-over-year. Um, material supplies and capital outlay and other outbuild are all assumed to be a little bit lower, but that is tied to the carryover. That doesn't assume carryover, that's going to go back into those budgets. And you can see that this is a very similar trend as, oh, here's what it amounts to in total. And you can see this on page, uh, the beginning, back on page twenty-four again. But this is a very similar trend to what we saw this year in terms of where we saw the increases and decreases. So here you can see the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget as compared to what we saw in seventeen, eighteen in terms of the changes there. So salaries and benefits increased, materials supplies decreased, operating side increased and, uh, other outbuild slightly increased. So here's last year's, I'm one slide behind, I'm going to catch up. The encroachments is found on page twenty-eight in terms of the D W. You can see they increased and they've been increasing historically for us. Um, transportation, special ed transportation, food service and special education. Uh, it's a continuing trend and this is a statewide trend, those private transportation in-house versus, uh, um, as we contract out because it's tied to their salaries and benefits as well. The components of the ending fund balance, uh, can be found on page twenty-seven in the budget book. You can see that we have our revolving cash, the, uh, routine restricted reserve, that's four percent of total expenditure budgeted. Assigned potential one-time and our reserve for economic uncertainties, which is three percent provided by the state is a requirement and additional local board policy for two percent above that. What this amounts to for the, uh, the assigned and unassigned balances relates to a total of five point four percent in reserves. This doesn't account for the routine restricted main, main maintenance that was shown on the previous slide. Um, but again, all of these reserve percentages are calculated off the total budget expenditures for the year. As far as the multi-year projection outlook, that is on page thirty-four of your budget book. And you can see the breakdown of what we're seeing in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, which is that five point four percent. In nineteen, twenty, it will increase slightly to five point six seven percent and five point ninety-two percent in twenty, twenty-one. And that mostly has to do with those assigned potential one-time expenditures increasing each year for us. And then the all-funds budget, um, begins on page forty-six. You're going to start seeing all the other funds listed and what you see here are summaries of the ending fund balance for the fund. Two different ways of looking at this. One by the, the fund numbers and categories themselves. And the other being what type of fund they are, whether it's restricted, assigned, uh, unassigned or not spendable. Like that, I'd be happy to take any questions related to the presentation, uh, for two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
Okay. Again, I would say I appreciate how clearly you, um, described the various reserve funds. I just think that's, and again, you said, because we need to use the care of this and not go over the cap, but, um, it's just, it's nice to have it e- explainable. You know, instead of, yeah, we have a whole lot of money for the cap, well, this is why, this is what it's for, here, here it is. And read this.
Yes.
So thank you. A lot of work and I do appreciate it. When I just, Jeff, I think that your explanations have expanded and at the same time become, um, more understandable to the layperson. Which I, you know, and it was after I was going through this and I wasn't at the beach, but I was required, I was required, I was in my car. But the, as he would be, I said, I felt that I, even after all this time, that I had a much better understanding. So I'm, I'm really appreciate you making it, it's done nearly as mysterious.
No, it isn't. It's, it's like you broke it down to, to really being common language for me, so.
I appreciate the fact you noticed that. Though one other difference that you'll notice in this year's budget book is we did in this information item include the multi-year projection versus years past we didn't. But I've heard, um, many times how important it is to have a multi-year look, so that's why we're including it in the initial information as well.
And I just had one question on the, on the encroachments. We don't even address, um, class size inspection anymore because that's statewide, that's quite off. In other words, we don't get money specifically for that. So even though we still do it, we don't look at it as, as we're doing this in this same framework.
So public comment during this public hearing on the twenty eighteen, nineteen.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah. I just have a question on the, um, that I'm sure you can answer very quickly. That like the HVAC items, it looks like, is it just being classified differently? It seems like it's really drawn down in one area and then goes up in the other area.
Is that a page number that you're on? Pardon? Is there a certain page?
Yeah, it's on her big pamphlet, Jeff, it's on twenty-one. Page twenty-one, and so the HVAC goes way down, but then under capital outlay, it's higher. But then there's no expense for, on page twenty-two, classroom lighting. And I just wondered if there was a difference in classification or were we doing something different?
Um, there is a difference with classification, one being repair, the other being a full replacement. And so we're doing a lot of full replacements, which is why you don't see.
Gotcha, which is why our cost is going to go down in repairs.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comment during the public hearing? Do you have a quick question? Thank you. And next, uh, public hearing, open the public hearing for public disclosure of use of Proposition Thirty Educational Protection Act funds for twenty eighteen, nineteen for direct instruction salaries and benefits. So question.
Uh, just to keep brief and simple, President Vickers, is the education protection account initially established in two thousand twelve, uh, with Proposition Thirty? And it was extended in two thousand six to be a Proposition Fifty-five. And it was a way for the state to deal with the, uh, dramatic educational cuts that were going to happen as a result of the, you know, credit recession. What we're proposing in our, in our budget is to buy all of that money and it's roughly five hundred, a little less than five hundred and eighty thousand dollars uh, for direct instruction into the classroom for teacher summer.
Public comment? Uh, and close the public hearing. And open the public hearing for public disclosure and ratification of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AV twelve hundred, government code three five four seven point five and CCR title five, section one, five four four nine, and twenty eighteen, nineteen negotiated agreement with the Mutley Beach Unified Effect Association.
Thank you. Um, this is the opportunity for us to have the required public hearing on the, uh, agreement that was being put forward. Um, as you've heard, they ratified, successfully ratified that contract and it will come before the board for approval later on in the agenda.
Public comment, can you put on this? I'll close the public hearing. Open the public hearing for public disclosure and ratification of collective bargaining agreement in accordance with AV twelve hundred, government code three five four seven point five and CCR title five, section one, five four four nine, and the twenty eighteen to twenty-one negotiated agreement with California School Players Association, CSEA, as Mutley Beach chapter number one, three, one.
Same process, uh, CSEA has successfully ratified the tentative agreement. It will come before the board later on the agenda and this is the opportunity to have the required public hearing.
So is any public, I'll let it be put on this, in this public hearing. There's no, of course, public hearing. That removes the consent count. Are there any items that board members need to remove? And ask a motion for items A through L, some of them. Are there any questions that may be added? And we, um, all in favor of items? Thank you. Public comment on the consent count, are you? All right. Now we can have our vote. Um, if there's no public comment. Items A through L as the votes. Or is it?
I.
Oppose, and then squeeze. We have information items, we have, uh, one tonight, which is our monthly financial reports, um, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, President Vickers. Um, as far as expenditures go on the first year, tracking the best I can expect for the end of the year. Uh, and I would like to point out that we've been talking about this past two monthly financial, uh, is that most of the property taxes is now reflected as received, which is the monthly financial report. The components of the ending fund balance are still in alignment with what we've seen and projected in the, uh, second generative report. And it's also reflected in the two thousand, proposed two thousand eighteen, nineteen as the ending fund balance. And, uh, the expense report, the surtrust is still the same quarter earlier than we had last time. So we're showing a, uh, year-to-date increase in investment value of additional hundred thousand dollars there. And of course, the rest are the, the non-general time reports. So with that, as we have to take any questions or clarification that you have.
Any public comment on this information item? And the budget report? Now it just got popped into my head from your other reports, you know, so. When you give you those percentages, but we're typically paying in at twenty-five percent, that's just the sound.
Yes.
We are really responsible.
Why do we bring it up?
We're responsible for a lot. Thank you. Uh, action items this evening, uh, this is. Action item fifteen, approval of resolution eighteen dash zero four, use of Proposition Thirty Educational Protection Act funds for twenty eighteen, nineteen for direct instruction salaries and benefits. Public comment? Motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
All with a wolf on you. Oh.
I didn't, I didn't say that, I just looked outside the room.
Mrs. Vickers?
Yes.
Mrs. Carr?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Well.
Mrs. Norman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wolf?
Yes.
Thank you. Excuse me, assistant. Uh, item sixteen, approval of ratification of collective bargaining, electing bargaining agreement in accordance with AV twelve hundred, government code three five four seven point five and CCR title five, section one, five four four nine, and the twenty eighteen, nineteen negotiated contract with Mutley Beach Unified Effect Association.
So this is the formal action item that the board consider approval of the current tentative agreement that has been ratified. And so you're going to ask for public comment?
Any further discussion?
I really like all the backup that we have in here to present all the, on impact of the agreement. It's very impressive.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose? Here's I will. Item seven, action item seventeen, approval of ratification of collective, electing bargaining agreement in accordance with AV twelve hundred, Item 7, action item 17, approval of ratification of electing bargaining agreement in accordance with AB 1200, government code 3547.5, and CCR title 5, section 1, 5449, and the 2018-2021 negotiated agreement with the California School Employees Association, CSEA, and it's Lill Beach Chapter 131.
Same process. This is a three-year contract with CSEA. We'll have reopeners in the subsequent years.
Any comment? Any discussion?
I do this item, I'm just again say, it's a lot of work, and for Mrs. Minstet, a lot of work and coordination of all of it. And I, to repeat again, I really appreciate the, the board groups buying into trying the IBV process. And as we go through that, I just think it's been productive. And I know that from, I hear from the administrators, Dr. Laura and from the students and that, this is really what they were hoping to achieve, was to be at this point at this time of year so that we end the school year with contract for next year in place with CSEA as a memorial experience. So everyone was together well, and I'm glad that we achieved that goal.
And not all districts are at this point.
Every time we ask questions, they're like, no, they're not there. Well, we certainly always have to. Sometimes we're held up by the state, but you know. But it's, it's just for the way people feel about it, to leave school and know that there's going back to fall with the contract that we set. You have Lill Beach.
All in favor?
I.
Oppose, here is I vote. Uh, action item 18, Mosaic Network Inc., Co-Vitality App, contract for play in 19 school year and a cost not to exceed $8,505. So I'm pretty involved.
Thank you. So this comes forward to us from Dr. Keller. As you know, he leads our charge to identify, uh, initiatives to screen, or so it's been identified by the stakeholder group. This will be our second year with Co-Vitality. Um, I think it's important that we acknowledge he did hustle and get us a price reduction of, for just about $4,000, so we could continue to use this and analyze our data. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Any more questions?
I have just one question. Are we still, um, working with the kids for?
Kinders through third?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's just, I know it's not through them, that's what I'm looking for.
Yes, that did, it goes into eliminate. Um, so that's, that was a teacher identified, yes. All kids, every student, right?
It's just that, I just.
Motion. Any discussion?
I think, I think it's really valuable to have multi-year, so it means track progress.
It's beginning, it was, we administer six weeks in, so teachers have the opportunity, our, our K3, but all students get the opportunity to settle into school, and then this also at the end of the year.
When will that be, your data from this year?
We've already had it.
Since when for him?
We'll bring that forward to the board in August.
Thank you.
Keller. Yes.
Thought we could have done it. How are you still on questions?
Maybe we can, maybe we can.
We're good.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I propose. Action item 19, approval of contract with line research.
We could do that.
STMS, elementary arithmetic intervention program for the purpose of piloting during summer school in 2018-19 school year in an amount not to exceed $33,002.
It must be policies or something.
Yes, so if I could draw your attention to the second page of this board item, I think it's important to differentiate this. The reason we are engaging in this is as you, you, we brought forward a consent item for you for a small group to try it. The recommendation from that group was to expand it. Um, so we'll close our other two online programs. This will be all elementary pilot. Um, we'll fully kind of play in the sandbox and get to know the program and make a decision in the end. But when that decision is made, I think it's important that we're on the student license track and not the subscription track. So, um, if, if we were to move forward, it would save us money in the long run. So we are doing the student license, even though you're, um, it, it requires a commitment. We have the opportunity to opt out and step out, but it's the exact same amount. But we are going to go in the student license route. So over time, if our teachers decide this is the program for us, we'll save money.
And why not? It's the same.
The first year.
Yes. It's not the second year, though.
I, I see that.
Any public comment? Questions?
Thanks, thank you so much for bringing us, it's an amazing program. One of my children actually, that she utilized it. And I know the child version, parents had it in, into the school district. And so thank you for listening to the teachers, helping them pilot. I guess sometimes when they pilot, they're not from the hand, and so it's a lot of them have to go over and really taking their feedback in what they want to do. And I'm always out. It's a great. Yeah, so it's where you can have, you can have help. Language, it's really just math, it's not language. And so for children who maybe haven't gotten there yet on language development, they can still look forward.
So it's wonderful. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose, here is I vote.
I have plenty, four members present, I am super community, question for me, for general comments.
I'll start, she's here with me. Um, I just wanted to compliment the art festival, UCB School that Bridget did, it was wonderful. It was great to have, to walk through it, for all the different ages, I really enjoyed it. Also, I wanted to compliment breakfast with the breakers. Um, I came back because my daughter did dance. But it was great, it was a lot of physical, it's a lot of people out there, a lot of tables, it was great and interactive. Um, hopefully that just gets paid.
I went to open houses at a more on top of the world. And unfortunately, I didn't get to tune this because I had a doctor's record. But the, the open house is what I want to really share. Dr. Davo, it was so nice, the theme that I heard in relation to the district and to you was the support that teachers get from you and from the district as a whole, how they very much feel that it was, um, it's all about the kids. There's been a shift, it's all about the kids, they feel connected, they feel supported. Even if sometimes they, they don't want what you're talking about, they, they feel that they do want it by the time they come talk about it. And it was a really, it was really nice. There's very different comments than I have gotten before. And so it's so nice. And then, of course, parents were either talking about their kids, and some other kids are wanting to talk about calendars. So, it's very interesting. Um, and then on, um, and then I was at Rocket Radio last night, and I so wish some other, we could see Rocket Radio, which is why I was. But I was at, with my parent home, at summer league basketball, because summer sports started on Monday. So our kids are going finals playing, so. I was, and so, um, I wasn't there, and I heard it was wonderful, and I, is, will there be a video?
Yes, we shared that.
Will you issue the, okay.
Just thank you.
Yeah, I saw that. Um, and Susan Cole was wonderful, and you had a kid in it, and then Anne Frank. And then Mindy, thank you, thank you, thank you for your time. Thank you for your, um, for not just bringing out, I think they were embracing it, and I think they were all just special. You're just going to keep doing that, but thank you.
Appreciate it, you know. I actually, I actually just want to thank you for your, your note and update regarding the Hanover. I think it's a great use of money, but it is, it is important that we get feedback that, so we need to articulate how helpful it is and how, you know, it helps us disseminate data and, and make use of, of the survey information, whatever else we have. So I think that's important for us to remember, that, that people need to understand why we're spending this kind of money and, and that sort of thing. So a little, little PR on that perhaps. So, but thank you, I think that's important that, that we hear that. I did go to the Rocket Radio and choked back tears the entire time, as usual. It was great, Mindy had a presentation, they had kindergarten, that was just, just incredible. Then they did that, um, the, I think I can't remember the right one, but they, Alexis Carroll did a wonderful one on mental health. It ties into what, what Michael's doing, and it's just, um, it, it just, it reminds you to do well by doing good. And, or you will do well by doing good. I would like to thank everyone who came to the Scholarship Foundation dinner, and those who stayed for any portion of the convocation. It is a long evening, uh, or till then. But, but you did well, yours did well.
It pays not straight, guys, I'm going to say.
There you go. But it is, it is a great, it's very, um, satisfying to, I'm lucky to be on the board. Peggy's also on the board with me, we're the directors. And, um, it is, it is an unusual, it is an unusual group. You, you, the directors, and the donors, I mean, you don't find that often. And so I appreciate that you all are willing to take the time out of your, at the end of the year to come and, and honor the people who want to honor our kids. And so I thank you for that.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, but.
You can.
There were some senior boys that were at my house over the weekend, and they were saying, wow, that was really long. But they said, you know what? It was great, because I've known all these kids since kindergarten, and it was really moving to me to be there and hear about their awards and to see them get honored. So I didn't even mind that it was four hours. So I thought, I was corrected, because I was like, oh my gosh, that was long. And they all said, you know, it was really meaningful to us. And those weren't even necessarily the kids that got huge money, they just enjoyed being there together and being part of the community.
And celebrating one another.
It's celebrating. And I think it's. It was a great perspective, and I think it's a great bonding experience for those kids, so thank you for all your work, it's.
Well, thank you all for coming. And then finally, um, I want to thank Jason and Mike both for the good call on closing TOW that Monday. Having had kids there and having PTSD from, you know, previous flyers. I can't imagine trying to put my kid on the bus and sending him up there. So that was a, that was the best productive call ever. And I, I just personally want to thank you all for doing that, appreciate that. I live in my house, and I was packing my car. Because I do, I do that constantly.
Well, I appreciate Mindy too on getting on the evening. Thank you for all you've done, kids, fellow teachers, district, appreciate it. At the convocation dinner, I had a chance to speak with the couple that was on.
Oh, the speeches are so lovely.
They, they were so nice, and they said, but one of the reasons they started doing it kind of goes along with CTE, because their kids went to junior college and saved them all this money. So they are using that money to, to give back, but, but yeah, they were lovely. I was really grateful to be able to go watch what's going on with dyslexia now. And very, very impressed. I mean, being a special education teacher for a while, and teaching kids to read, being speech pathologist, and being so frustrated seeing kids get to age third grade, struggling with reading, but you couldn't do anything until they got to third grade. The rules were, they had to be two years behind in reading. You didn't expect them to read till kindergarten anyway. So you caught, saw these kids, confidence and self-esteem getting lower and lower. And our system didn't help much. I mean, there was specific, if they had, you know, some things they could help with, but definitely a lot of, not a lot of dyslexia. And now we're helping them so early and so specifically. I love that, you know, it moves along so rapidly. You have two minutes to introduce the words, and you've got two more minutes to spell them, and they're, it's multimodal, and they're using everything. The kids were very engaged. So, boy, a big shout out to, um, Triana and Bundy and Elizabeth and Agnes. And then I got to meet with Brad at Thurston and what is going on in Thurston and figuring out, how are we going to help these kids that get all the way to Thurston or maybe high school and are missing? So again, I've worked with dyslexia. And they've done a fabulous job figuring out which tests kind of narrow it down so you can better help them. And now we got to figure out how to do all the different therapy for remediation or, uh, one of the proper words there. Organization learning, maybe, I don't know which one. I went to part of the dyslexia training with the Sunday Project, and it was like my old speech therapy days. I mean, it just was, went right along with all the phonemes and, it was, it was kind of fun to see. And, and following up with a big shout out to Alexis and seeing Dara, Anne Frank, and how many people were just moved to tears. And it was really the emotion that the young actors put into it. It was such a difficult play, but so meaningful for all. And the fun of physical, and seeing all the kids get up there, Carol Sun, and then, you know, singing and dancing. And then the, the writing, the script writing and play that Alexis is doing Monday and Wednesday. I can't believe she has done so much. I mean, does she sleep? I mean, these things are on the weekends, so I got just very, very impressed. So lucky to have her. And, um, big shout out to Bridget too, but also to us for giving her that opportunity. I mean, she, to have some periods to really bring more arts in. And what could be more lovely than sit out there on a lovely evening, jazz bands playing or Chloe singing, and those kids are all so excited with their families. I know a couple of little girls are at home, they're in second grade, grabbed me and took me around to show me second, you know, TOEFL work. And then a couple of the high school boys grabbed me and showed me high school work. It was just such a happy family, loved the occasion, and I know it was a whole lot of work, but it was great. Mock trial was fabulous, you know. Mrs. Martinez might be getting tired, but boy, another lot of work, but great, great job. The, uh, open house, saw Carol there, that was fun, we went together, but then we're kind of, or we met each other there, but then she's talking regal, I'm talking regal, but lots of happiness there too. The, um, then I have a request to talk to you about. As far as the calendar, um, could we just forget it? No, I want to. No. One of the things that I keep hearing, some from parents, some from students, is about AP testing. But not just that, about all the work they need to do in the summer and how that takes away from their summer. And some kids don't take AP classes because of that. Some do, but they really haven't done the summer, summer assignments. So I, and, and because of the round app and can't talk, I don't know what, what Jan and Peggy learned in all your meetings. Do you know, do we know how much the summer assignments would change if the calendar started early? Is that something that?
I think I can address that.
Yeah, I think we can address it because she was the lead in the meetings too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the, the request, I think for the information, um, to provide clarity, I think. For me, uh, it's, it'd be, it's hard to ask a teacher to what extent they would shift their scope and sequence without determining the amount of days that we're talking about.
True.
Uh, so, uh, I wouldn't want to say, you know, that if we were to shift, uh, euros, some way, shape, or form, would they adjust to what extent? Um, and I think in the committee and in the conversations, and I think Dr. Allman, and I've had several conversations about this specifically. We know that there will be an adjustment, to what degree would be dependent on how many days.
And of course.
And so, and also when is it the AP test fall, because again, they fall the first two weeks of the race. So, um, I think there's all, there's agreement that there would definitely, people would have to look at their scope and sequence depending on how many days you'd be looking at potentially making a shift, so.
Wouldn't you assume that perhaps they would, I mean, our, our AB teachers might talk to other districts who start earlier than we do and they're AB teachers to see if, you know, they assign some work or whatever. That would be, I'm sure they talk to each other.
Right, so in terms of requesting information, I'm happy to, and we're for Dr. Allman to kind of touch base with the teachers at the school side, especially those who are teaching, teaching the AP classes. We, uh, To simply get, you know, a temperature check of, you know, to what degree, I mean, obviously, a lot of the conversations have already happened. They've said, of course, that would make some adjustments, but to what degree would be really dependent on how many days.
We didn't really discuss that, the months of, well, the summer work. So we didn't ask for score data on the different A P courses, how much summer work is there? So we wouldn't have that information to start with to compare to how much it might reduce it. Again, based on how many days you would be having to come to verdict construction. So, but Ty did, Ty did, you're raising that question, I think it's incumbent on all of us. If there's anything that we feel data wise that we're uncertain about, we may get those questions in to Dr. Gloria right away. Because that means it's Tuesday, and so that way we can all benefit from the information. But I think that's the approach you want to follow, other than, you know.
The current summer work expectations are available on the website, on our website.
Okay.
Under, I can give you the specific curricular tab that it's under.
Okay.
So there's that, and it's been mostly commensurate with past practice, from what I understand based on teacher reporting. And like Trustee Vickers said, we haven't had like an intentional conversation with teachers about that, I think. You know, I would say that the kind of general sentiment is that they would like to see a major reduction in that based on what the calendar looks like moving forward.
Yeah, it looked, it looked pretty extensive to me as far as summer work. And I did hear from a number of students about being overwhelmed by that amount. And that if that changed significantly, that would mean a lot to them.
Yeah, so what I could do is like to put together, for the request information, I'll put together the information from the website and the sub date. Current list of summer assignments. And then, you know, we can do a generic kind of, get a feeling from the teachers who are currently teaching to what, I don't know if we can ask them to what degree they would, but to get, you know, a commitment from them. Potentially, would you evaluate your summer assignment if the calendar was to change? And then provide that to the board, that purpose for you. I won't give any specifics, but I think that might pay off maybe, I think that could.
The assumption would be too, that teachers would much rather teach the kids than have the kids, ask most of that information themselves. At least, that would, yeah, that would be my, right, yeah.
And in that request, I'll also include a sort of reminder of the attrition rates we've seen in classes. So I will remind those, also make that go through context of what you're talking about.
Something else that was brought up to me that perhaps we could look at. And as far as the attrition rate too, it was expressed to me by several teachers that they would like a later date to be able to have that drop time.
What do you mean?
Well, drop out of the A P class and go to a regular class. That they have to assess students so quickly. And if that was later, then the summer work would not be as crucial. So they could make less.
Some about A P classes, summer work, even summer working regular classes and how that functions. And that, those kind of discussions were part of their calendar committee as far as, that gets into the.
This is all separate, I'll have to separate this one out and come up.
Because if you're looking at attrition rate, attrition rate could be something that has increased with students taking so many A P classes. So maybe they signed up for four and then they start, and they say, okay, I can't do four, so they drop out at one. Where maybe ten years ago, you wouldn't have seen that, because they wouldn't have been attending for four. So we'd have to, I mean, that's, like I said, again, we didn't, that wasn't part of calendar committee study to.
I think that was, I think that's part of it, doing the kids taking so many A P classes. But I think part of it is kids thinking that they'll, oh, I'll have time to do all that during the summer and then, oops, school strikes. And they haven't, and they haven't done all those, and then they're forced with, what kind of having to drop out.
Yeah, so I'll provide the summer work, I think the drop date conversation is something that would.
That might be a separate one.
We'll have a separate conversation, maybe we can discuss a later date. Actually, I'll, but is there anything else related that you feel you would need to be prepared? Obviously, the F A Q continues to get longer on the website, so there's additional information.
Today was a nice beach day, right?
Yeah. I get it, yes.
But I'll share the information.
Can I make one point, because I've been. I went to the band concerts too, for you. And they were absolutely lovely, and the one at Thurston was, was full, like it was a whole house. Yeah, it really was. And I know we have new teachers that, as a parent, parents are kind of quick to judge, judge, or you're trying to figure out how they fit their kids compared to the last ones and stuff like that. But, and I think that, I think that overall arch was, their kids are learning a lot. You know, even though it's different, it's taught different, it's different, the whole brain, because they still want Mr. Flash to. They, they still have their, those kids are all about to graduate now. And the kids are, the kids are not those kids, and they don't have that sentence. It's kind of interesting to hear, like, talk with friends of younger kids that aren't good, or they didn't even have their friends. And, but it was a full lesson, so good, it was so, the music was good. Let me suppose it was, especially here, especially here with little ones, but those are patient teachers.
Yeah, sometimes I wonder, somebody who loves music and is a music teacher, and then they become a music teacher. But they're expressing their love for music and wanting to carry on with kids, but it shouldn't sound very good, but wow.
Well, it's like a cacophony that's almost necessary, they just, they're moving them, and to be able to have a pride of moving them, it's just, yeah.
Well, I'll follow up with attending, I didn't, I didn't attend Monday night, but the next three nights of music. And what I noticed, we have a lot of construction, because we have a lot of participation, it's impressive. And obviously, you know, for the master's programs, we intended it to, but it's, what I would add to that is that someone mentioned earlier with the students, the students were there so supportive of each other. I mean, and they stayed, and they stayed, listened to the next group, because now we're so big, they do six, seven, eight. And in the high school, they have, I mean, you have groups, they have, but they just keep bringing them in. And they did a really nice online thing as a high school group, that was a good addition. So they were really, it's kind of be nice to be spreading around, but I don't think they can do that. And Chloe was there singing on that, like the chorus. I agree with Peggy on the Breakers, breakfast with the Breakers. As Lance is taking that on, it really reached out to try to get more information out of the community and then doing all the, having the availability for the art checks. And involved, has that as her, as her mission over here. So it's, they had them, the Breakers take through that, through that testing that day. Again, I agree on the art festival, I think that Bridget really put a lot of work into that, along with the other teachers. Summer S D and I think we had a jazz band there, right, also, to lay. And then, I mean, they have all day outside hours, they're going to do their performances, but it gives our kids another chance to showcase. But what I was impressed with two things, the quality of their work, if they can get the high school ceramics level. I mean, definitely, they can be selling those pieces. Not all of them, of course, but some of them is really nice work, which then reflects on the instruction they're getting. And experimentation, it's not, it's not routine work, it's really creative. And the other is for all grade levels, we're providing a lot of art experience, media exposure, a lot. You know, we are doing more than you sometimes hear about, so that is impressive. And I liked seeing, all you guys, the little ones, I liked seeing your kids work. And I could say, oh, I know that child. So it was a very, I complimented Bridget that night, because she saw it, but it was, and it's nice to come to the high school, and they had a lot of people come, a lot. So that's, I just go to do this appreciation that the school parks are on, for their tools there. We see for there, right?
Yep.
Got to go and die. But it was nice for them to have an opportunity for them to interact and do what we appreciate for supporting school. Kind of the honors convocation, you all do yourself all the time with, and your leadership, not only, and Peggy also on being on the board, but also, of course, the meal that you provide, because that's, I see that with people that count our donors. And I don't know whether they do that other places, where not only do the kids support each other, but the donors, and, oh, they see them last year, they see them this year. And they have a rapport, and they are, and some of them come in for a long time, and it's, it's good for them. And especially the ones that are like in the Morions, I mean, it's really good for them to connect and to see that they're still, they still get the chance to say their piece, because it is so heartfelt for them. I got a little picket guy, Skipper.
He's great.
You know, he's, he's shout out to the kids. Nobody comes to our house and takes us down. So it's, you know, it is very, it's very inclusive to the community, and I greatly appreciate it. Not just, not just the monetary support for the kids, but the moral support, in a sense, something special that we do. It's been really busy lately with those kind of things that I consider, you know, people say, oh, it's so great to come. I say, this is my, like, my pleasure, because I have to prepare, so I don't have to do anything. I just come in with the benefit of whatever performance it is. I would think that we need to perhaps continue to review our protocols and make sure that we're following our procedures that we agreed upon. And then the other is, it came up to, we approved two conferences with board members attending tonight. And so, since we have people now that are more interested in doing these things, I would like to have this considered as a different process for doing that, where if there's a, and take away the C S B A annual conference, put that in a separate category. But as far as other ones, to bring it under this eye to the board and say, I read about this one and I'm interested in this all week. And, you know, that everybody else wants to go. And then, you have to understand that my background, there were numbers of years up and down, we're, we're supported by taxpayer dollars and we didn't have much, and so there wasn't really enough people to go. But I, for me, I think we really need to be cognizant of that and like, you know, what is intended. And just so that, to air it here and then say with each other, rather than like going to Dr. Gloria and saying, I don't know. Right, and then he has to like decide, okay, who gets to go, and it's, so I think it means, I don't know, I'm just proposing that, that we do it alone ourselves to start with, and then say, well, I'd like to go with that too, and then who's going to go? And what's, what are you going through, are you going to get, because we're not in the classrooms, so what are we going to get out of it? What are we going to go back to share with the rest of the people?
And then, would you, the Master of Governance, which is the C S B A, would you like that here as well?
I have loved that now.
Yeah, I think.
I guess that was a good.
So Victoria had talked a little bit about some of the models, so what we'll do is bring that back to Jan and potentially bring it back to a lot of groups, so that.
I think that is the process for it.
Right.
And it's necessary.
Initial discussion, I think, is, is, you know, we send out a lot of that information to the board.
Right.
But independent of, you don't know who's going until you see it on the conference. So we'll provide an opportunity for a discussion to see if it's a lot of good stuff. So we'll come up with something, pilot it out there with you as a group, and talk about it. I think, you know, there's a lot of great opportunities out there for us to go and be fresh on both, yourselves included. So I just to find that opportunity, have a discussion, explore some.
It's just, I would thought we just give the process.
Yeah.
Yeah, and see how that would really benefit.
So the next regular meeting is on Tuesday, twenty sixth, our submission meeting is on Tuesday, the nineteenth. And that's really live. There's a lot of, there are a lot of worries, yes. And I think that to those who are not there coming in for that. Well, going is on.
With the survey.
Well, and that's where people. So motion to adjourn.